Oh, yeah. It's beautiful.
We're live now.
My stomping ground.
And I went and married.
At least it was a pretty area.
Very pretty area. Married with her brother, went and she had to stay here because of my office, so I had to stay back.
Hold down the fort.
But there was other family members that all shook up.
Well, that's awesome.
This doesn't say where this one was from.
The what?
The Chamber of Commerce.
Eighteen forty-four.
Oh, yeah. This is when it was printed. Yeah, it's a brochure.
Look at it. That's an older one. Someone did it.
Yeah, it is. No, it's sitting in here.
Oh.
Do you need any one?
No. No, I got about five of them.
Well, see, what's this? It has Alstacia Steakhouse at eight six.
Does it have it in there?
Well, that one, I don't remember. I'll go with that one. I'm sorry. I don't remember when the last time they did it, because I just recently moved.
Is that the middle page? It used to be the middle one.
Oh, there you go.
That's guaranteed. Don't get rid of it.
Know who probably had, who owned it.
Well, the one before last, they had the center part of it had to do with the Living History Center.
Yeah.
Twelve and five.
And I know they just did one this year because we gave them out at the store. Yeah.
Yeah, and you're right. And so this year they have it, and the year before they had a big two-page spread on.
Yeah.
He's doing it when the helmet was still on. She did one through the.
Yeah.
I don't know if they were the new guy or what, but she had one.
Yeah.
So that's before Luigi. So I think that's the one before. That's too bad.
Eight years old? Ten years old.
Ten years old.
I'm always curious what's in here.
Your dog for serving.
Yep. Next Friday.
Okay, so this is your last official meeting?
Well, Tuesday. Tuesdays.
Oh, you'll be here Tuesday.
I'll be here Tuesday. Yeah, and then I'll be going grocery shopping Thursday, so.
Are you ready after a pair of meals?
Making sure, because, yeah, I'm doing the, okay, what do you want to bake? Making sure the dogs have their food.
Isn't it crazy? You have to set up some kind of one out of town if you're not.
I'll be running my house from my recliner.
Proletary procedures.
This briefing?
Which, which?
If you guys.
There should be folders somewhere here. Oh, you're in City Council. Go to general.
And I'm forewarning everybody in the neighborhood. I'm like, if you see the dogs running outside and Joe pulling his hair out and everything.
And he goes, okay, you go on.
Christopher just goes.
You're in a folder.
This is government code, right?
Yeah.
This one's.
No, there's paperwork that probably is.
The one who loves paperwork.
This week?
Yep. That's why I'm carrying out. I don't love paperwork.
Because if I go here.
I'm sorry. I turn around and all my binders are in boxes. That's the military coming out. Still have that organization.
So if we don't have, we'll make him.
No, you're, if you're. Yeah, but if they're appointed.
We're appointed, but we're not. We don't make tours.
Well, our board here are appointed and they also commission them to come back.
Which one are you talking about?
His county. He's the chairman of the.
If it's created by the county, you're sorry.
Are you, are you ordered? You haven't.
No, no, we've been always doing it. We don't have those meetings. We're always open. But to make sure, I have to tell all the people I have to go get.
Yeah.
It's recommended. I mean, I would get.
It's recommended, not required.
Is Paul going to be here?
I'm assuming the county hasn't do it.
Well, since it's the Texas Open Meeting Act, I'm pretty sure that if you're.
I didn't know if he got snagged up by something.
I thought you said you were going to be here.
Paul?
I'm going to be here.
Asking if anybody's heard from Paul?
Yeah, I know.
Go to the T M L website and all.
Yeah.
Where you go to tell, I would tell, whether you're supposed to or not do it anyway, it doesn't cost you anything.
We decided, we decided to go ahead and make a bunch of changes to the Waste Management contract last, last time, too.
Oh, you did while I was out of town.
They're not, they're not going to be paying for your housing.
I'm going to give it to you.
You're going to pay double.
By the way.
By the way.
If you need me to send you a text to ask you this question, since we have a few minutes. The Legion Hall asked me, because they're in my district, they went to Public Works and tried to get a recycle bid because they would like to recycle, right? And they were told by Public Works that, no, you're commercial account, you can't have recycle bids.
That's not true.
The coffee shop and.
Sammy's.
And all of them all have recycled.
Well, the good news is the person who can handle that for you is here. Devin is over Waste Management, so.
At one point, at one point, that was correct.
City Hall has a.
Yeah, Sammy's and all that. Sammy's and that has recycle bids.
Well, at one point, that was correct, and City Hall only got it because we were City Hall. For the longest, they did not provide it for commercial.
But he needs to reach out to the base commander, right?
No. Base commander. No, American Legion.
I said base commander, but what, the commander? Isn't that what he's called?
No, it's Mike Schmidt. He's the building manager.
Last thing I was thinking of.
And then Jim Tundry is the finance guy.
The one other guy.
Jerome Miltus.
The rentals is Steve Doffin.
Jerome Miltus.
Steve Doffin.
He's the commander. He don't handle that.
Steve Doffin said last week he went into Public Works and he was told that commercial accounts can't get recycle bids. So.
Is that in our contract?
You're going to give him your phone number and have him call you.
Yes. Okay, we appreciate it. We're trying to do our part.
In fact, what I'll do is I'll, Devin, I'm going to send you his contact info, and that way you can contact.
Yes, Steve Doffin.
I told him I don't know the answer. I can only pass it on.
That's when you said, how about the commercial that knows?
Because I told him to go to talk to Public Works.
I'm waiting to hear back to see if Councilman Kerry is going to make it. And based on the lack of response.
What time are we ending? Because I'm putting a dollar, we're done by seven thirty. Few hours.
I'll put a dollar that we're going after seven thirty.
You're going to owe me a dollar if we go after seven thirty.
No, I know that we're going to go past.
I learned, why? Why do you know that?
Well.
Why do you a horrible person?
I know I'm terrible.
I'll pay y'all a dollar if you get out so you don't have a form after seven. Or before seven.
Everybody just leave.
Wow. She'll pay people to leave.
It's five thirty. Let's see who.
The problem is, you have to, I guess.
I shouldn't be telling it on live stream.
If it's a deliberation item that doesn't require action, can you still leave? I guess you can't.
No.
Yeah.
You have to have qualms there.
Yep.
Who had that question long?
Yeah, I think it's come up for me, too.
It's all good.
All right. Well, I have not heard from Councilman Kerry, so let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Are you ready? All right, we're going to call the meeting to order at five thirty. We'll start with roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Bill King, District Three.
Harold Stein, District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
Councilman Kerry, District Two, is not present, and Darren Schroder, mayor, is here. All right, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Please remain standing for the indication. We don't have a pastor here. If you'll allow me, I'll come for us. Dear Lord, thank you for all of the challenges that you put in front of us. Thank you for trusting us with your will. Please help us make good judgments, good decisions, and do what's right for the people that we represent. Gracious in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Next is citizens' comments. Scott? It's all you.
Kyle McVay, three oh seven Madrid. All I'd like to do is just ask you to consider, when you're talking about the capital improvements plan, the animal shelter. We've needed one in Castroville for umpteen years. If you have extra funds at this time, it would be what? We would serve so many people. Our nip and tuck organization has done the spay and neuter program for the last seventeen years and probably have prevented, oh, thousands of little kittens and puppies being in the city here, just in Castroville, much less all of Medina County. So with this shelter, we could do so much more. We would love, nip and tuck would love to work with the city, fostering, sheltering, everything. And we're willing to do that and just hope you'll consider it in your planning. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else for citizens' comments?
David Merz, one forty-eight Village Path. I was going to talk about the street repairing Country Village. The combined total you've got on the agenda is five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and change. Depending on what counts as being part of Country Village and what streets you're looking at repairing, Country Village brings in between two hundred thousand and two hundred and thirty thousand a year in property taxes. So you're looking at two to two and a half years worth of property taxes going to the street repair over the twenty-five-year life of a road. That's ten percent or so of all the property taxes we'll be paying. My take on the roads in my subdivision is that they are not perfect, but they are perfectly usable. It is entirely possible that some people in the neighborhood are really concerned with the quality of the streets, but I can't find those people to talk to them. The people who talk to me when I'm out on my walks are concerned about drainage and the traffic cutting through the neighborhood. I remember that there's something in the works for the drainage, and I know we had a cop hanging out in the neighborhood catching people flying through for a couple weeks, a couple months ago. But it would be really nice to see some of this money, since it is such a large chunk of the property taxes that would be going into it over the life of the road. It'd be nice to see something that might help address the drainage issue or the speeding issue, even if it's just a couple speed bumps at key locations. If this is already in the plan, awesome. I couldn't quite gather that from the packet. If not, it's just a thought. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks. All right, anybody else? I do want, so Diane McCormick dropped by a little while ago and dropped these off just to let people know there is a Kill Hunger Food Drive for Halloween, a haunted house. That's October thirtieth and thirty-first in Hondo, eleven oh five nineteenth Street in Hondo. That's the Medina Ballet, six thirty to nine. So that is available. And then they're going to do the Nutcracker again this year, December twenty-ninth at the Majestic Theater. And if anybody needs information on that, that's the Medina Ballet, the Medina Ballet. So I thought that was kind of cool. Cute. If you haven't seen them, they're, they're pretty amazing. All right. Next item. Review certified bid tabulation and take appropriate action on awarding a contract to BK Paving for the twenty twenty-two street bond. That's Country Village subdivision project in an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-five cents, and authorize an additional ten percent contingency of fifty thousand dollars for an additional pavement, level up trench repairs, and unforeseen field conditions. So let's start with this one just by, and you're going to talk about this. So I, and I did want to address something that was, that was mentioned before, now that we are on this agenda item. The, the take on this is that all of the streets need to be repaired at some time. They need maintenance. They need reparation. And if you do nothing, they're going to totally fall apart. And so we put together a street program that within roughly ten years, we're trying to get all of the streets back up to par. It might take a little bit longer depending on what, what happens with this. And we had looked at different areas where we might. The reason that we had prioritized Country Village was because we determined, I think it was that we had determined that there were no utilities that needed to be repaired. There's a lot of other areas that needed a lot worse, but they all had utilities underneath that had to be repaired on top of that, and we don't have the funds for that yet. And so to Scott and Devin's credit, they're looking at where can we begin this process to start repairing the streets and start getting that in motion so that we can hit that ten-year target. So, please.
Awesome. Good afternoon. My name is Joel Valdez. I work with K-Freeze and Associates. I'm the engineer of record on the plans. On October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, we've opened five bids. And of those five bids, BK Paving was the lowest apparent bidder, and we are asking for a ten percent contingency on those plans. To add a little bit more to what you said, Mayor, when we do these projects, these roadway projects, we're asking for the extra allowance to do what's called a level up to help with the grading and to help with the drainage, to help address some of the drainage concerns that are out there. And right now, what we're seeing is along the curb line, we're seeing some, what I would call bird baths, where you have a settlement of, of the pavement, and the water kind of collects, and it doesn't drain properly. So some of this money will be used to help level that up and allow for proper drainage to help with the, with the roadway and prevent ponding with the water.
So did you evaluate each one of these providers?
Yes.
Or did you just pick the lowest bid?
No, no, we did evaluate all the contractors, and there were, we had received several questions throughout the bidding process. And so we did address all their questions, and we did evaluate every single one.
Okay. Has BK done work for us before?
Negative, not to my knowledge. No.
So normally you, and there's not a, an extreme difference between them and the next, but it is, you know, that's, that's a twenty percent difference between the next highest and that one, and it's what, a forty, forty-five percent difference between the highest one and that one? So how do you determine that they are capable of doing this, that they will do a quality job?
Sure. So some of the things that they do on their bids without we looked at was how much it costs for them to mobilize, how much it costs them to remove some of their waste. And in the discussion at the bid opening, they did, they did explain that they do have some local ties to the community. I believe one of their family members does live in the project area, so they have ties to Castroville. Some of the other.
Contractor's father-in-law lives in Country Village.
Oh, gotcha.
So they do have some.
I don't know if that means we're going to get better.
Is that a son-in-law, a dick scanner?
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to get better streets or worse streets, but he's related to this year horse this week. I said, well, that's not saying much, because everybody is.
But some of the other members were, were from further away. Tyler, Texas, San Antonio, obviously. And so their, their, their cost for moving the project down here would be more expensive just to mobilize.
What was your estimate of the, the project?
That's a good question. It was five hundred and forty thousand.
That's the thing is, I think what you're seeing, Mayor, honestly, is just the amount of markup that exists in these projects. Because what we, where they came in at was close to what we hoped and figured that the cost would be. In fact, I think they might have been a little bit higher than what we were estimating. So there's just, there's a lot of markup in, in some of these bids. We're just fortunate we had some of those pretty close to what we thought it'd be.
So because of what happened last time?
Which last time?
The last time, we had the chip seal stuff and everything go and how it was not done right and the wrong materials used.
No, that's not the last time.
That wasn't the last time. You're talking about years ago.
That was three times ago.
Previous administration.
I, I'm just asking, what checks and balances are we going to have in place to make sure the right materials are used and that it's being done right and not going around people's vehicles in the street? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so a great question. So one of the things that you saw happen on, not Amelia, because that was the county job, but what's the other one that we did?
Berlin.
What? Berlin, on Berlin. There were multiple inspections throughout that project. One of the changes that's coming as a result of that project is that we will be using trap rock for this rather than the, oh, I'm sorry, this is hot mix?
This is hot mix.
Just kidding. So it's a hot mix project. But all future projects that are, that are actually chip sealed, we're going to change our design a little bit from lessons learned. But it will be inspected along the way. I think we've got a great group with Terricon and K-Freeze between the two of them, you know, looking over a shoulder and looking over the contractor's shoulder to make sure it's done right.
Just to add to what Scott mentioned. So when the contractor, before he mobilizes, he'll, he'll issue us a list of products that he'll be using. We have, we as the engineering firm will review them and certify that, that these are acceptable for, to be used on, on the street project. We'll also route it through Devin's office just to make sure that everybody's okay with these, with these products.
Okay. And how much notice we're going to be giving people? That way they can get their vehicles off and to reassure them that they're not going to end up having material all over their driveway like it was last time. See what I'm saying?
Do you mind if I? Yeah. So one of the first steps that we're going to do is we're going to actually walk the site with the contractor, just to verify. There are some areas where there's some sediment along the trench line and along the gutter line. We're going to identify those areas with the contractor. We're going to mark them out. There'll be some, some spot repairs that'll be done before the contractor moves his heavy equipment in.
Okay.
So a lot of the work that we're going to see is excavation of the, of the trench line, filling that in with either flowable fill or, or a hot mix, and then bringing that up to, to a level. Then he'll come in and grade. He'll, he'll mill the existing pavement and then he'll patch it.
So are they going to do that? We've got the places where it's concave. Are they going to do that in those areas, too, or just on the sides?
Correct. So we have areas that where it's concave, kind of looks like a, like an, like an M, where it kind of goes up and it goes down, down the middle and then back up. He's going to fix those areas.
Before he starts on the other project?
Correct. Oh, in the middle of it.
Is he using the asphalt zipper?
I'm sorry?
No. Probably will use some kind of BOMAG.
Yeah.
So what kind of notice are we going to be giving citizens? That way they can get their vehicles off the street and everything. Twenty-four hours notice before they hit their.
No, it'll, I mean, the plan is once we walk the, once we walk the site, we'll provide a schedule for the whole entire plan. And then once we get that schedule together, we will make sure to publicize it through all of our media, but also if able, a lot of the contractor stuff, they can, we can notify people directly with the door hangers. But the great thing of hot mix versus per se chip seal is the fact that it doesn't have a lot of the residual mess that that does. I mean, you can come in and you can get it done, and it's very clean. It does have a mess, don't, don't get me wrong. Every construction project does, but it definitely, I will make sure, I will be overseeing the project that we don't have that Country Village.
It's fiasco.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's why I'm getting it out there. That way people know.
Joel K-Freeze, you know, the contractor, we'll make sure everyone is very informed and very happy when they get this.
Can we actually see the, before we get started on that, can we see the communications plan? Just so that we have it documented?
Yeah.
I just, you know, stage one, this is how much notice, this is how we're going to deliver it, this, this is who's going to do it. Just that kind of detail, is that all right?
Sure. So what we'll do is actually part of the, the requirements from the contractor is to provide us a schedule, his construction schedule. So once he develops that, we develop a communication plan and identify if it's going to be going through Nextdoor, Facebook, all the social medias, and obviously do door hangers as needed. But we'll be out there beforehand with spot repairs until the, the city, the, the residents of the area will see us actively doing work already. So.
We might want to put a message out then to let them know, because I know when they were doing the, Snyder was going around for the electrical in River Bluff, had a few people concerned, seeing people walking around and in their yard and what have you. So we may want to put a notice out.
I think a good way to do that is to put up, I think it was really effective putting up those yard signs at each one of the main entrances into Country Village. So if we put up those yard signs saying, this is what the timeline's going to be, this is what's going to be happening, I mean, something like.
Survey crew evaluating the road, what have you.
Give a link to say, information here, put it on the city website.
Yeah. Like a project sign.
Herb had a question. I keep cutting them off, sorry.
It says a footnote on here that said you corrected some errors in the yellow highlighted one. Did you, did you evaluate and correct errors on any other bids besides the one that you're recommending?
No, BK Paving had, had errors with their calculation. So what we normally, so what we do is we provide them a PDF document or a Word document for them to calculate their unit price and their extended price. And we, as the engineering firm, we go back and just check their math.
But what I'm trying to understand is, did they comply with the instructions that were in the RFP?
Correct. They did.
So they were a compliant bid?
Correct, yes. They were compliant. The only error that they had was the, the mathematical error. And so what we normally do is we look at their bid price, and we look at their unit price and their extended price. And the most advantageous to the city is the one that we respect.
Because they're all from San, almost all of them are from San Antonio, and three of them are pretty much higher than this.
Correct.
And, but your estimate was only about sixty thousand higher than this?
Approximately. I don't have the exact number, but I can definitely find it for you.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Joel, you're going to be the project manager.
Correct.
What's your background?
Sure. So I've been at K-Freeze since April. Recently moved over. I've worked with K-Freeze on other projects and other assignments in the San Antonio area, and that's how I got recruited away from my other position.
Who you with? Because you're not a young pup. You have, you seem like you have experience.
Correct.
How dare you, sir?
I've been doing engineering for about twenty years, almost eight, twenty years, eighteen years, nineteen years now. Prior to that, I did some engineering with the United States Army for about six years, helping, helping the United States build forward operating bases. And so then I'd also, and then, so from that, I carried over to the civilian world.
You tell who you worked with before.
Oh, I worked for CPNY before.
Okay.
CPNY, yeah.
Sounds good. Yeah, I felt very comfortable here listening. You talked to realize, you have, you have experience on projects like.
Gotcha.
And the civil engineering, you understand then for adapting and overcoming on some things.
Yes, yes.
Sounds good. Good plan.
So what's involved with preparing the right of way? Just looking at the details here of the highest bid had the lowest cost, so I'm guessing they incorporated that with something else. What's involved with that?
So on a traditional project, when you prepare the right of way, you're really removing obstructions within the first twenty-four inches of the ground level. Since this is a mill and overlay project, we're anticipating significant amount of obstructions. So really that bid is for tree clearing. If their equipment needs to come in and, and tree clear some of the overhanging brushes, therefore it doesn't jam up the equipment, and then disposal of, of that. So each contractor, obviously, may probably made a site visit, identified what they would need for the prep right of way, and then where to, where to remove those spoils from. That's why I believe BK Paving put very minimal is because they're probably from the area, and they probably have an area where they can easily dispose of tree branches and, and whatnot.
Well, luckily and unluckily, I think that our electric crews came in and hacked up that pretty well, so. All right. You know, own your mistakes. All right.
I've got two questions, please.
Who provides the signage for directing the traffic while the situation's going on? Is that the contractor?
Correct. The contractor submits a plan to us. The engineering firm will review it, and they'll pass it to the city for, with our recommendations or revisions, and it goes back to the contractor. But, but they're providing the traffic control signage.
So you mentioned our drainage over that neighborhood, that it is an issue.
Correct.
So my next question would be is if that is improved, where the water runs down the street the way it was intended to, do we have sufficient exit capacity out of the neighborhood? I don't know where all that flows.
So, correct. So K-Freeze is also tasked to do the drainage master plan, and what they're looking at is more holistic improvements. What this project's going to do is going to make the water move more efficiently at the local level. So as it's being approved to the drainage channel, the existing drainage channels, it is going to still get bogged up at that, at that drainage channel, because those improvements have not been improved yet. It is outside the pavement limits, but there are some drainage channels that are not grating effectively downstream.
Because some of those go into the drainage, it's also not going to take the new subdivision.
Oh, we're about to grow up, see?
Yeah. And I just wonder if we've got enough capacity, you know, that if we improve the discharge of water from, from there, does it have a place to go without affecting other people? Because there's a lot more, there's going to be a lot more water coming off that hill eventually.
Correct. So when the original Country Village master plan came in, subdivision, they, they created the engineering plans, and they designed a lot of those channels in place. So it was designed to convey that water. Over time, things have settled, grass overgrows, trees, brushes. And so all we're doing right now with this project is making it more efficient, back to its original condition. It won't be perfect, but it'll be a lot better than it was before. But as it gets to that drainage channel, it's still bogged down until we get to those projects and to those improvements.
Now, we did make improvements in the channel, though, right? That's been done?
It's, it's scheduled. It's not started. It has been awarded to the Wayne Rogers, and he's scheduled, he's just.
When is he doing that, do you know? Do you know?
Within, in my top four, I sent y'all.
Yeah.
He's basically given us October as the start date, nothing definitive because he's been booked out.
So that'll help.
Improvements to the big ditch on.
Yeah, that's the big ditch.
Yeah. Okay.
That'll help a lot.
That's the one that's of concern.
And that's been, I know people are frustrated, but like, so y'all acted quickly and decisively as a council? Well, okay. We had a lot of deliberation about it. But once, once we finally got to this is what we're doing, you were pretty decisive. You did it. But again, getting the work actually performed by a contractor is proven difficult.
But we've also awarded the contractor K. Freeze, including all the drainage issues in town.
Yes. That's, that's correct.
What, you'd mentioned the, the additional water that's going to be coming from the north. All of this is going to be handled in that K. Freeze design.
Yes. But keep in mind, we're going to have limited options for, for how we're, how much money we're going to be able to spend and what we're going to fund.
Understood.
So that's, that can also be a challenge.
All over town.
Right.
Yeah.
But you're right. They are looking at all that right now. Any other questions for K. Freeze?
Mr. Duck?
Nope.
Okay. So I think that the, was there any other discussion? All right. I think that the motion would be then to, to approve the award.
Should he award the bid to?
Award the bid to BK paving for the 2022 street bond Country Village subdivision project in an amount not to exceed $498,192.95 and authorize an additional 10% contingency of $50,000 for an additional pavement level up, trench repairs and unforeseen field conditions.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is discussion on capital improvement projects on streets, parks, public utilities and uses of governmental fund balances, including future bond issues. Now, I wanted to caveat this with saying this is the making of the sausage. This is something that we are, there are no decisions to be made at this point. We're going to come back with, with another CIP discussion with actual decisions to be made. Right now Scott's going to walk us through some different components of this to give us kind of some foundational stuff as he's working it through with the department heads to make the recommendations. So this is really giving us a good foundation of knowledge to begin with. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we are not making any actions on it today.
Well, thank you for your patience as we work to get this going. I, I actually wanted to bring this up first. This was our first planning session. It was dated August 26th to 21. This was the hurry up and let's get something done. I remember being pushed into getting this done, but it was, I, I think a very fruitful discussion that we had last August. And that's really what was the impetus for the, the CIP that we have today. And y'all may recall, we had the infamous whiteboard. We prioritized things. We put little stars by, by various projects. This was a community survey that was done and the results of this survey, we talked about how, you know, what the satisfaction versus the importance ratings were. And then where council rated things and how the community rated things and kind of figured out where our alignment was. And all this kind of led to the development of the CIP we have today. So as the mayor talked about, what will be going over today really in part is educational. I wanted to give you an update on several things that I think you're going to be very interested in knowing. With regard to where our funds sit, you know, how much money have we spent on our current bonds that were issued? What has it been spent on? How is that impacting the CIP? When we look at the CIP and a CIP is short for capital improvement plan or as I like to call it, a community investment plan. Because that's really the way I see it. But so, so this, this first part is really kind of educational. What I'm going to talk about is the different buckets of money that, that we utilize in, in developing a CIP. And then we're going to actually look at the CIP document, which is, it is definitely in a sausage state right now. So let's, first let's talk about the different buckets. So basically there, there's, when we look at the CIP, not to confuse you further, but there's probably, I think, really a dozen or so different true like colors of money, maybe more. But they can generally be broken into these different categories. There's one missing and I'll talk about it in a second. But you've got the general fund fund balance, the utility fund fund balance, bond funds. And those can come in different flavors. You can have a general fund bond, a utility fund bond, a revenue bond, which we'll talk about. ARPA funds. So this is federal funds and honestly, this could be just as easily called grant funds because there's all sorts of different flavors of money from the federal and state agencies. And then special revenue funds. Now, the reason these five are, are up here specifically is because we have buckets of money. We have amounts of money in each of these specific categories. The one that I said that was missing is private. One of the things that, that the city is seeking to do is leverage private investment. As the mayor has talked about frequently, we want new to pay for new. And that's done in the form of these development agreements that you all have been a part of and, and that we're going to talk about, I guess, after the CIP discussion is you want to talk about the development agreement stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Policy. So, so I'm going to get into each one of these buckets very quickly. So first, the general fund and general fund balance. As you are aware, during the budget process, staff was kind of keeping you abreast of what the amounts, the anticipated fund balance amounts were going to be. So as a reminder, the audited FY21 general fund balance, this is excess cash reserves was $3,826,402. As of the close of our operations on September 30th, we estimate we have excess revenues of around $428,583. That's unaudited, right? So that's our estimate and we're being conservative as we typically are. So that's a total excess cash fund reserves of $4,254,985. One of the things that we recommend is maintaining some of that cash reserve for unanticipated needs, et cetera. And the general accepted practice by, by governmental accounting, so it's GAAP, is to maintain really a maximum of 120 days. Now, I do know of cities that have a whole year in, in general fund fund balance, but the general accounting practice that's, that's recommended is 120 days, 90 to 120. Typically I try to have 120. So the way that you get to these numbers, this is our FY23 operating budget of 3 million. And I want to emphasize operating, so this does not include debt service and some of those other things that have their own funds that, that pay for them. So the operating budget is $3,777,790. You take that amount and divide it by 365, that gives you your daily amount of 10,350. You take this excess revenue and divide it by that 10,350, you end up with 411 days. So 120 days would be 1.242 million. Subtract that from your, your balance and that tells you what your excess reserves are. Again, this is policy that you set, really how much you want to maintain, et cetera. But in the policy document that was just adopted as part of the budget, this is the, this is in keeping with that policy. In other words, maintaining 120 days. So this would be excess fund balance. So there's your general fund. We do the same exercise for the utility fund. There's your, your audited fund balance of 4.4 million, excess revenues of about 450,000. And you end up with about 2.4 million in excess fund balance. So these are buckets of money, if you're thinking of it that way, that, that are available to the city council and to, to determine how to spend as we talk about projects.
You might go in and do a projection button there so that I can see better my eyes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I just realized I'm not doing that. Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
Better.
Way better.
Go back to the general fund really quick?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
There you go. Thank you. I would have kept on.
All right. We're going to pause for a second to acknowledge that Councilman Carey is joining us at 6:01.
My phone is still on.
Thank you. No problem. Thanks for making it.
Paul, if you can convince three people to leave by 7:30, you'll get a dollar from Deborah and myself. I think she wanted it at seven o'clock though. I was getting too early. Okay. So this is general fund, excess reserves of around $3 million. And then utility fund, excess reserves around $2.5 million. Round numbers. Bond funds. Now, I will show you in a minute how our current bond funds are being spent. Shouldn't be any surprises there. They're being spent in accordance to the adopted CIP and with some of the actions that, that council has approved. So we issued $10 million in January of 2022. $5 million of that was for the general fund and $5 million of that was for the utility fund. We have planned borrowing in the utility fund of $6 million per year for the next, for six years total, so it's $36 million. This was built into the rate structure that, that you all adopted. And the intention is to improve our utility system. Now, it's unfortunate that we've seen the rate of inflation that we're seeing and that we're seeing, and one of the real issues is supply chain. It is extremely frustrating to me, to staff, and I'm sure to you all in the community as well, that you, like I said, you've taken decisive action to fund some pretty big projects that we'll talk about in a minute. But some of those projects, you can barely see that anything has happened simply because, well, there's supply chain logistics. Our meters, our electric meters, just as an example, we ordered them before, as, like, when y'all initially said that you're good with the AMI project, before it was actually even done, I went ahead and pulled the trigger and said, let's get these on order, knowing that I could cancel them. Worst case scenario, I could cancel the order. Right? So we placed these orders in December of 2021. They were originally for delivery of summer of 2022, so this, this past summer. They are now estimating summer of 2023 for electric meters. It is beyond infuriating. It's just, it's just frustrating, but it is what it is. And that's just one example. I mean, there's plenty of other examples of supply chain issues and logistics and stuff. But be that as it may, so we have planned borrowing of $6 million for six years. And I want to emphasize plan. All of this is going to really boil down to, well, you know, how much can we borrow? How is the, the development happening? Because part of our rate schedule is based on the, the takedown schedule of these developments of the, the new homes. And then general fund, we had planned to borrow $5 million every two years, really for just a four-year period. So that would be $10 million total. Now, I, I fully anticipate this getting revised, hopefully allowing us to borrow more funds for other general fund projects. But as it stands, this was the plan. This just shows you the general fund bond issue. So this is that $5 million that we borrowed. It's going to show a budget amount at the bottom of 2.7, not 5, because this was originally just for 2022. It's not looking at 22 and 23. So just keep that in mind as you look at this. But what you'll see is the budget amount in that first column, the actual, that's what we've actually spent of those bond funds year to date and what we spent them on, $772,000. And then how much we've encumbered. So we've encumbered an additional $743,000 and we have a budget balance of 1.2 million. Now, the, what's not listed in here, just as an example, you just approved about a $550,000 street project. That's not on here. That's going to come out of the general fund. That will reduce that 1.2 million dollars. I didn't say it earlier, but I was really, really pleased with the amount of participation we had at the street for the streets. I did announce to that group that we are pushing K. Freeze to develop additional street projects for the River Bluff subdivision. And then also there's some streets in Old Town that do not require water and sewer improvements to be able to be worked on. And you've seen that. That was a part of the plan that Devon put together for us in December or February of this year. So we're still working on those, just so you know. And I hope to spend at least this 1.2, like have that committed by the end of this year, first part of next year, as part of those street projects that will come forward.
You mean 700,000, right? Because we just approved 550,000. So that would drop it.
Well, yes. But no, I think we can spend another, because again, I want to have that for FY23, you have another two and a half, more or less.
Okay.
And, and if you, I'll, I'll show you the CIP in a minute, how much y'all, we had kind of put in for streets. But I, I want to get those street funds committed. We're undercommitted for this year. We want to kind of overcommit by the end of the year, first of next year. And then we'll still be undercommitted for streets in total, if you want to know that.
Is the swimming pool included in?
The heating? No, because that's not coming out of bond funds. It's being paid for out of fund balance. So, good question. So this is the general fund. Here's the utility fund. Again, there was $5 million borrowed there. You will see a total approved bond of six and a half. That's not right. We only approved five. And you'll see that we've encumbered 5.2 and we have a negative balance. And that's, again, some of this is because of some of the things that were not anticipated. And actually I'm going to back up one. One of the things that wasn't anticipated is that northern bypass, for instance. When we did the CIP, we didn't have that in there. So I've added it now. And that's, and engineering alone is 450,000. We don't have a plan yet to how we're going to pay for the road itself. We know that we want new to pay for new, et cetera, but there's, we're still going to have to figure out, how much is that going to cost us? Who's paying for it? What's the city's, what, what does that financing structure look like? So that's something else I'm working on. On this one.
And we challenge that, you know, we talk about new pays for new, but part of this is, part of that bypass is really, unfortunately, it is dealing with county traffic. Most of, most of what this bypass is going to happen is not actually the new development because there's nothing developed, but we still have insane traffic, so.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, I think what's going to happen. Anyway.
Yeah.
I'll talk about that. I just realized northern bypass is on this one as well. Like I said, this is, these are in draft form, so I'll have to make sure I change that. But you'll see little purple flags to the left. Those are notes. Those represent some notes to, to ourselves to kind of keep track of where, where this is coming from. Each one of those is an approved task order that's been, or one or more task orders that council has approved for various engineering, engineering projects. But you'll see, again, the total committed, our encumbered is 5.2. And that's between the actual and the encumbered amount. Is that right? Yeah.
And I heard the materials are just about 100% in for River Bluff. Tom, stop by.
That sounds about right. Yeah, that sounds about right. So hopefully we can get started on that before the end of the year, is the goal. I would love to get that done before we do our streets there.
Aren't you also going to see a delay in the requests or the payments on these smart meters if we're not receiving them again until next year? The outlay for the smart meters?
Yeah. Yes. More than likely it will, there will be a delay in, in some of that outlay. We've already paid, I think, 240, right? Oh, yeah. I've already, I, I, there is a, I hit some rows. Below the smart meter program, there's like five or six rows that are the various aspects of the gas meters, the electric meters, the water and sewer, and the, the Amaresco contracts. We, we, we track all that separately so we can kind of keep track of what's being paid where. But I think there's, to Amaresco, we've paid about $240,000 so far. And then gas meters, we spent about $86,000 by gas meters. I have another 130 for installing those when those come in. More than likely, unfortunately, this is probably going to be a piecemeal project. It's not the way that Amaresco wants to do it. It's not the way we want it done, but.
But good parts.
It's, it's probably what's going to happen.
How are we progressing on the pods?
Well, not well, not well. We were supposed to have had a, a presentation two meetings ago. And then we're supposed to have a presentation last meeting. And I was just informed this afternoon that the presentation that we're supposed to have on October 25th has been pulled. And I need to have a meeting with K. Freeze about that. I, I don't know why. I just, I just know that it was pulled. So I'm.
Because we pay a fine for that every time until we're.
I think we're getting, yeah, I think we're getting relief from the fines for now. That we've been threatened with fines, but.
We got an extension.
Right. But we do, and that is one of the, you'll see it in a minute in the, in the CIP. That is one of the things that I think is kind of acting as an anchor as far as the cost. I mean, it's weighing us down. It's not something we really, it's not a fun project. It's not one that anyone wants to do and it's stupid expensive. And the timing is terrible because we have to do it as soon as we can. And I, we'd much rather spend that money somewhere else, but I'll talk about that in a second.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
These are great questions. If you have any more, please. Fire away. But again, this just tells you where the bond spending is. I will make this accessible to you so you'll, you'll be able to look this to your heart's content later. But that's, I mean, you're seeing what I'm seeing. This is just kind of an accounting of a balance sheet, if you want to think about that, to give it that way for the bond spending. So then another bucket of money we have is the ARPA funds. Y'all are well aware of these. We really haven't committed them. When we proposed your general fund balance, you may have scratched your head just a minute ago or may have recalled that, you know, gosh, I thought it was higher than that. I thought Scott said we're going to have a million plus. That's because when, when we were talking about the general fund fund balance, what, what was being contributed this year? Sorry. It, it included that ARPA, the recognition of the ARPA funds that we have received. I have broken it out separately here, because really, we need to think about those funds separately. For a big reason being because they're federal funds, and we want to make sure that we spend them the way the federal government wants us to. Now, they've said that we can just take them as lost revenue, and we can put them right in our general fund and use it for whatever the general fund is for. Not saying that's not true, but I just don't, I would feel much better, and given that we have other ways, we have justifiable reasons to spend it. I think when we talk about tonight, I'll make some recommendations about how these ARPA funds can be used, as well as some other funds that you're about to learn about. So that's ARPA. The, the language to the right where it says drinking water infrastructure and wastewater infrastructure, that's pulled directly from a presentation that we had with the City Manager Association, from a consultant that was talking about how these funds can be used. And that's almost verbatim the language that was in the ARPA guidelines that we were given. That you can see it's water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, or stormwater management. And we certainly have plenty of water, sewer, and stormwater stuff to do, so.
They didn't have any, because I remember all of these things, but I thought that there were some other categories.
There are. These are the most, yes, there are. When, go ahead.
Weren't there things for like economic resiliency? That kind of stuff as well?
Yeah, there's, there's, yes, there's also COVID response. There's first responder, premium pay. There are a couple of other things that are, yeah, they just aren't really CIP related. So again, being that this is a CIP discussion, I identify the ones that are directly tied to our CIP, and that I think would be easy to justify. But yes, you're absolutely right. There's, and that circular, you, you all have that. I don't know if it's on the teams, I'll have to double check. But I know it's been provided in the packets. When we were talking about ARPA funding, that was one of the things that I should, but I shared with the councils what the feds had shared with us. And then we have these special revenue funds. And you may or not be, may or may not be aware of them or of their balances. And so part of this was kind of, again, in the, in the vein of being educational, let you know, hey, by the way, you know, we have this special parks projects fund that has 14,000 in it. Now, that is the Friends of the Regional Parks, so they actually, they collect that money. And then when it gets up to a certain amount, Devin has a meeting with them and say, hey, you have this amount in your fund. And they kind of come up with projects to use that. And I don't have any examples off the top of my head, but you have improvements to the pool, for instance.
The trails.
Shade covers or trail improvements, that kind of thing. You also have 141,000 sitting in your hotel motel tax fund. Now, the other thing to know about special revenue funds is every single one of these is restricted for special use in some way, shape, or form. So hotel motel tax, the best, and truly, this isn't just a, it's not tongue-in-cheek. This is, this is what the, the state law says. It is for heads in beds. And that's like literally in the law that was passed. Its primary purpose is to drive putting heads in beds at hotels. And so all of the uses are tied to that, generally to marketing and, and other efforts. You can, you can have multi-day events and pay for certain aspects of those events, but they do have to be multi-day, because the idea is you're bringing someone here to sleep in a hotel. And so you've got to have, if it's just a one-day event, well, then they may come and go back home. So there's some parameters like that have been established, but generally, that's, that's how that's tied down or how it has to be used is for events that would bring people to come and stay in cash.
Now, is that, that's the balance that's in there right now, right?
Yes. These are all bank balances, so literally, these were printed today. And I didn't total everything up, guys, but.
It's because there are specific buckets, though.
Well, no, but I mean, I, I think it'd be awesome to be interesting as a policymaker to know how much money's sitting in our bank. But suffice it to say, it's, it's a lot. 20 million plus is sitting over there. I always say that, because I know people say that we're in financial straits and we're having difficulties. And it's just nothing can be furtherers than the truth. The city is in very, 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 very strong financial condition, which is why you got the double A rating. Then we have a municipal court technology fund. Now, these next two, they're part of the tickets that the state, you know, these are, these are state-controlled mandated fine amounts, right? And they can only be used for certain purposes, but we have a municipal court technology fund that has 18,000 in it. So this helps pay for, can be helped pay for the ENCODE software that we utilize. And then municipal court security, that can be used to pay for a bailiff. It can be, but obviously, it's not enough to pay for a bailiff. This has been money that's been accruing over time. It can also be used for cameras and security measures. If we wanted to redesign part of City Hall to improve the security.
Do we have anything that's dedicated to right now? That's total balance?
Yeah, so there's a small monthly amount that comes out of it for ADT. But generally, these balances are these, I mean, we keep a healthy balance. This balance is indicative of the balance that's in there typically. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that once we get into the actual decision part of the CIP, we do a deep dive into these just to see what is encumbered for the rest of the year.
And that's part of the reason I'm showing this to you. And again, this is on your teams already. If you're going to go back and revisit this and think about it and make notes, this, this information is out there. Then you have a utility drainage. And I'll be honest, this was not one of the two that I had Leroy, the attorney, look into. So I want to find out what this, how this is limited, what, and what ways it can be used.
Yes, is that $5 a month we pay on the utility bill?
Yes.
No, this is separate. But this is, I'll just tell you, this is something different. So there is that, you're right. There is a fund that is for the drainage fee, but my understanding is that that is not this. But I'll, I, anyway, I've asked that question specifically, and said, well, is this for paying those bonds? And he said, no, that's in a debt service fund. This is separate. So if this is separate, I want to find out what it's used for. But anyway, be that as it may, we'll, we'll confirm what this is for. It has 312,000. The two biggies are, there's a water and sewer impact fee that has almost a million dollars in it. I've plugged that into the CIP, I'll show you where, because I would like to empty this account and, and use it for what I think is an eligible project for the impact fee. And then water acquisition. Now, this is somewhat limited to things that have to do with acquiring water rights, buying water rights, or buying water for the city to the benefit of the city. I think there's a creative way to use this money as well to connect the airport well, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. And then we have the Alstation House project, which has a limited amount, $10,900. And there are.
Is that the Berry House?
Yes.
No.
Alstation House, this is Steinbach House.
This is Steinbach.
The Alstation House was the Berry House, that's what it used to be called.
Well, so the Berry only has $368 in it.
Now, this is probably the Alstation House.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Well, because we have to keep maintenance on the Berry House for insurance and such. And there should be, it used to be called the Alstation House, so I'm not sure what we go to calling them.
Well, there's, I was going to mention, there's three other funds that are much, much smaller. There's a Berry House Preserve American Grant that has $368 in it. There's a Library Memorial Fund that has $1,800 in it. And then there is a DEA Drug Forfeiture Fund, which has $900 in it. So I didn't list them, because they're not, they're inconsequential, the amounts are.
If this is the Steinbach House, that is one of the donations that facility gets.
I think that's what this is, honestly, but I don't know.
But we'll, we'll check on the name, because the Berry House does have an account. And it does have, and we'll chew that a little bit more than that, because we do take insurance out of it and security, because that's part of the lease agreement.
Weren't we also expecting a gift from Mr. Collins that he was going to donate for?
Yeah, that hasn't been triggered yet, but yes. There's a $1.5 million in the Alstation House agreement that will be used. If you read the agreement, the proposed primary use is for baseball fields.
I didn't know what the trigger was, but I think it was for parks and sports.
I don't believe it's been triggered, triggered yet, but I, I've looked at it, but it's been some months.
No, it's, yeah, I don't remember the exact, but it has.
It has to do with, I think they have to hit a certain takedown percentage or whatever. I need to look again.
You should look at that, because we also have requirements to provide details of what we plan on using it for. So we need to at least get to the point where we have an agreement on what that's going to be.
And we can move forward when the trigger occurs.
But that's a great, that's a great point, because I did not, I have not included that in the CIP, and I need to add that. And you'll see in a minute what I did.
It's an unknown resource at this point, so.
Right. But it's good, it's, it's good to plug in and just keep in, keep in the list.
That way we can look at properties and everything, too.
So this is, I thought the way this worked, Mayor, this just proves that I am not very good at PowerPoint. What you're seeing is my best ability, my best effort. But I plugged this in, I thought I could be able to click on it and take me to a link.
I don't know.
It doesn't matter, because I've actually got it out here, and I'll bring it up, you know, on a separate folder. So right now, this is sitting over in my tab, and I'll, I'll put it over in y'all's. I'm a little bit reticent, because I know there's mistakes in this. I know that it's not, like, I know for a fact, I've been through it a couple of times, but I know there's got to be some other stuff I missed, just like what Paul just brought up. But be that as it may, this is the. So let's see how we can look at this. In a way that you can actually see it.
Zoom. That's too far away.
You can squeeze some colors.
Yeah, well, I wanted to.
Hide from 2027 over to 2032. Hide those, 2027 to 2032, just hide those, those columns.
You don't want to hide them, or you want to just add, I can just do this, and then we can scroll over if you want, but. Yeah, I wish I could make this top part go, like, I want to see that.
You can, up at the top.
Right there, there we go. That hides some of it.
You can also pop it out and just look at it in the Excel. If you look at the very, very top underneath the word search, where it says.
Well, I've got, I can do that over here.
I wanted to just do it like that, maybe easier.
All right, is that a little better, a little easier to read?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to just go over the larger elements, so I don't want to make anybody dizzy or sick by looking at this. But I want, I'm going to show you, so this is broken out into utilities administration, wastewater projects, water projects, electrical projects, gas service projects, and the drainage utility. That is what comprises the utilities. Each of those are subtotaled, and then there's a total at the bottom. And then we have the general fund facilities. See, like, this is stuff I need to double check. I want to make sure this isn't double counting anywhere. I don't think it is, but. Then you have general fund facilities, general fund planning, general fund parks, general fund streets, and general fund miscellaneous. And then at the bottom, each one of these throughout the document are color-coded. And there's, there's limited colors, and some of them aren't very attractive, but I just wanted to differentiate. So this color is, this brownish color is general fund revenues. And then below that is the new general fund, the bonds for the general fund that have been issued. And then that, below that is a subtotal of the general funds. There's your total general fund expenditures by year. And this is a 10-year docket, goes from 2022 to 2032. And then you have utility fund revenues. So these are things that ostensibly would be cash paid. Now, there's a problem, hopefully you see it too. We're not going to cash fund this amount of money. It's not going to happen. I don't have $3 million in cash and excess reserves to pay for new debt issue. I say that, I mean, we, I just told you, what did we show you? The, the utility fund, un.
Two points.
It's two something, right? So you could, if you wanted to, spend every bit of that and do these cash projects, right? And, and you, and that actually wouldn't be a terrible idea. I would much, feel much better having that money, some, at least a good portion of that, in reserve for debt service. Because then if there's some other issue, if the takedown schedule doesn't happen, or whatever, you've got the ability to, to serve your debt for several years. But be that as it may, that's kind of the way, this is staff's kind of, not, I won't say first attempt, we've had multiple attempts, but this is our current work in progress. We've got too much funded there. And then you look at the new utility fund bonds. Again, you should spot a little bit of an issue here, because, I mean, we've got, what is that? It's $34 million in one, two, three, four, five years. That's not terrible, because remember, we had planned on issuing 36. Maybe we'll still be able to issue 36, and we'll be able to do this. But it is a little bit problematic, because so much, so much of it is being spent in these two, or really in 2023. And we're going to, I'll go over those projects with you, so you can see why that is. And like I said, part of it is, well, $4 million of that is, is a damn project. And even if we don't spend all of that in 2023, probably will in 2023 and 2024. So it's just, even if you, even if it's a little bit fungible, it needs to be, we need to be able to be even more fungible than it is. And then the private sector, this, this just represents how much money is being invested by our development partners in infrastructure in the city. And it's not inconsiderable. I mean, it's not, not a small amount, it's $25 million. And then grants and other. So this just shows kind of how the city's trying to, to leverage some grants to the benefit of the city. And you'll see the total of that is 11 million, so that's not inconsequential either. Then we have our total utility funds. So it just shows you how much is being spent across utility funds, whether it's bonded or private. So this looks at all colors of money and the type of project. And then all sources, there's your spending for all sources across all projects. And like I said, I think, I, I need to make sure there's no double counting here. I don't think there is, but. It does get somewhat complicated, because this is how these are totaled, you'll see. So it's, it's, there's lots of opportunity for, for human error, because you go in and select the individual cells to make sure they're totally. Anyway, like I said, you'll have. You'll have access to this as well.
Scott, I can show you how to add that by cell collection.
All right, so that's, again, I just wanted to show you how the CIP has been broken out. I was going to show you what I programmed some of this money for. The impact fee, where I think that could be used, that we have 921,000 sitting in an account. We know that the equalization basin project is impact fee eligible, because that's in part how we're going to pay for it with the new impact fees that are assessed. So old impact fees can also be used. That's the reason they're, they're collected, is for eventual expansion of the water and sewer systems due to impacts, due to growth. So my suggestion is to use it for, to use those impact fees for this project, this equalization basin project. And part of the reason is, is remember how I was telling you that 2023 amount was, was too high? By putting in this, there, I actually, even though we still have $12 million in 2023, it would be $13 million if were it not for the use of the impact fees. Does that make sense? So I've done some of those types of things. The other one was. This, I, I pulled this out as a revenue bond. And again, I'll need to talk to Clay and our, and our financial advisor about this. But I believe that the way that that is being proposed is that when this water tower is built, this, this phase two water tower, that, that, that those bonds would be issued as revenue bonds. So they would not have the full faith and credit of the city behind them. They would be based on growth. So the bond buyers would be buying them at risk of the development's making. Does that make sense? And that's perfectly legal, there's not, I mean, there's nothing shady by the city, it would all be done. But I, again, that's something that a financial advisor will actually tell us, that he'll, he'll provide his advice and counsel to us about how to issue that debt. But that's one way that that could be issued, so that it's not impacting our bond. Now, whether or not it actually impacts our ability, how much we can issue, because that's going to be a $15 million issue. So it's, anyway, there's, there's lots of things that come into play, while.
Question on that one, on the revenue bond. Is that tied to the revenue of the water system? Or is it tied to the revenue? Or is it tied to the revenue generated by what you're using it for?
No, it would not be from the water system. It would be revenue bond tied to the pits that get developed as part of the developments.
Okay. So, basically...
It's not tied to the, it's not a utility system bond.
Right, so it's not for the water...
Building a utility system asset.
Right.
It's actually a bond that's issued against these specific developers and the specific developments. It's not for the entire city either.
And is it only for, so if it's for water system improvements, then the revenue bond would be only for water system, water system only out of all the utilities in that area?
It would be specific to this project. So, whatever is entailed in that project, it really, it would be just that tower for just that, what?
So, my point is, it's not water and wastewater.
That's correct.
Water only. And it is not the entire city, but it is that development only.
Correct.
So, isolated just specifically.
Right, because keep in mind, we did talk about this before, the sewer impact fees are sufficient to pay for the improvements to the sewer system. So, we don't have to do something special or different. It's really just the water system that's so expensive that needs to have its own funding. And again, hats off to Clay Benford, because I think he's been very creative about sheltering the city from risk. And we were reminded of that by one of our developers. He's like, hey, y'all need to be, thank you. Because that same developer is, he's hurting right now, because things aren't happening quite as quickly and he's on the hook for all of them, so... There was something else I was gonna point out, but I can't really was. There was drainage, it was the drainage fee, the water acquisition fee. So, I don't know if I plugged this in or not. It'd be in the water projects. I thought about, no, so I thought about plugging it in, but I didn't plug it in. Or maybe I did. Airport plant, there it is. Yeah, so I didn't plug it in. But you'll remember, that was around $600,000. That was for water acquisition. And my thought was, there are two major things that need to happen in order to improve the airport well. One is to expand it, so it actually serves as a backup system of some kind to the city. But in order for it to be a backup system to the city, it actually has to be tied into the city. So, tying that system into the city is roughly a million dollars. It's three-quarters of a million to a million dollars. But then improving the well site itself, that's like three and a half million dollars. Now, one of the ways that I'm looking at trying to accomplish this is through one of our developers, who needs water sooner than our Phase II will allow, and that's Cobblestone. So, Cobblestone needs that water. There are some water, there's some water excess capacity that's available through the Medina Valley well upgrades. Those have been paid for by Alsatian Oaks. So, that has a known cost and there's a known quantity. So, one of the things that we will be talking to this developer about is, is that enough? You know, and if so, here's the price tag, get it right. And it's around $3 million. If that's not enough, then what we could do is back him out of Phase II on a prorated basis and do airport well improvements and charge him that rate, right? But all of it, it's, there's opportunity costs, there's a lot to think about. But anyway, I just want you to know, I'm trying to be, trying to follow Clay Benford's lead and be creative about how to solve this issue. So, part of the issue is the development of the water, of the airport well site. That's gonna be fairly expensive. And I've got that in here as a private development. That's why I have it in there like that. I'm stating that that's gonna be funded privately, because ultimately, whether it's, whether it's a new manufacturer that comes to the airport property, which is something that we're constantly trying to look at doing, attract some airplane manufacturer or somebody else that'd be interested in building a big warehouse and hiring a bunch of people and building airplanes on our airport property, that'd be great. It's actually not outside the realm of possibility. It would happen. If that were to happen, part of that process or part of that project would be upgrade of this well system to bring them water, right? For their fire suppression and the other things they would need at the airport.
Those water sales would be airport revenue, would they not?
Potentially. Now, here's the other thing. I would like to look at, okay, that water acquisition fee, one way to do this would be to pay the, and I, again, I need to seek legal advice and some other things, some financial advice on exactly how to make that happen. But what we would do is use the water acquisition fee to pay the airport, basically that money over the airport. And we would get in return water rights for some X number of period of time, like we've done in the past. Or we'd actually buy the rights outright and own them. And then that money would actually be reinvested by the airport. They get this cash, and then they actually, they go put in that, they tie in the system. That's how the money gets used. Potentially. But again, that's just thoughts I've had, and I welcome any input or thoughts that y'all may have about how to use that, these funds.
And I don't wanna get too deep into this, but if you could answer kind of high level, if, so if we leveraged the well at the airport utilizing our own water rights, then is there still a repayment back to the airport if we're using our water rights and using the airport source?
Well, you don't have any, okay. That well has the right to pump a certain amount of gallons, which the city does not own, the airport owns. You know, the city owns the airport, so whatever. But the airport, as you know, has to, it has to benefit the airport, right? Yeah, so, I think the short answer is no, because ultimately, you're still using their well and their water. Even if it's like, you own, what you're saying is, but we own 4,000 rights of pumpage. Yeah, but you don't own that well. The airport owns the well, and they have to be benefited. And so, so I think the short answer is no.
Okay.
I don't know, if you, again, you said you're gonna talk, but if we buy all the water rights?
If you buy them, that's a different, that's a different scenario. That's not what the mayor was asking.
Yeah.
That's not what the mayor was asking.
But you can't, I believe that the answer to that is that you can't buy the surface water rights, only the, I'm sorry, not the groundwater rights, only the surface water rights.
Ex- the acre feet.
And then if you remove the well from the property that has the groundwater, the base water, then they lose that base water, because it's no longer tied to that well.
Well, they can only pump the acre feet of water. That's all they, they can't pump more than that. So, if we buy, if the city were to buy that, pay the airport for that, as well as the well, before we improve the well, and it cleans up everything.
Well, that's kinda my thought, is if there are way to, that's, Phil, you're thinking down the line, I'm thinking, I, I know it's not, I'm thinking in the interest of the city, not the airport. I'd be real clear about that. Like, in the airport's best interest, if I were negotiating on their behalf, I'd say, no, it's kinda like us. Like, do you wanna sell your gas system? No! That's, that's revenue forever, right? So, it's not necessarily in the interest of the airport to sell outright all that stuff. I say not necessarily. And the caveat is, well, but they're, they don't have, they're not broke, but they don't have any money. They don't have any money in fund balance. They don't have any money in, like, their ongoing operations are razor-thin. So, this could be a windfall to them, potentially. But, you know, we're basically negotiating with ourselves, right, to do that. But the bottom line is, I think we all benefit, they benefit from getting a water system that actually services the airport and allows for future expansion. We get the benefit of having an alternate water source that is tied into our larger system, so that when we have breaks, et cetera, main breaks, et cetera, we've got another straw. And this isn't the only kind of thing that Reese Back and K-Freeze and city staff is mulling over. There are other efforts that we wanna do to try to secure water for the city now and in the future.
Has anybody reached out to the FAA, pick their brains regarding that?
No, because again, these are all, I think we do that once we've really kinda landed on a pretty good idea.
I was just looking at, knowing how long the federal government takes.
Yeah, they're not gonna, it's a pretty straightforward process. It's a long process, but they're not gonna provide ideas for doing stuff like that.
Right.
Well, ultimately, all they care about is that, was it, was there a benefit to the, like, did it benefit the airport? And was that benefit at market rate?
Right.
You have to prove that out somehow. But all of that is...
Okay.
Subject to interpretation, because you can do development-related deals that are not at market rate, but you prove out the benefit, because, well, this person, they're gonna buy fuel, they're gonna, you know, you do all those things. Okay, so, again, just kinda giving you a thought on the use of those two big funds. The drainage utility, I'll have to look into, like, again, I don't think that's paying debt service, but I'll have to find out what that could be used for. And obviously, that could be some of the drainage improvements when we do road projects. It could be related to paying the drainage study we just performed, or, you know, as a grant match for a future stormwater project. Like, there's a lot of other things that that money could potentially be used for if it is indeed available. I think the other one was the ARPA. I did not, I don't think I put ARPA in here as a funding source. I started to and ultimately decided, you know what, that's something I wanna seek your input on, because honestly, as the mayor pointed out, there's a lot of things that technically it could be used for. And then when you think about the fact that, well, we could also just take the revenue loss and roll the dice and say, we're just treating it as general fund revenue, and then you use it for whatever you want. So, knowing that, I didn't wanna make, these others are a lot more pigeonholed. It's a little bit easier for me to say, okay, this is a water impact fee, like a sewer-water impact fee. Well, that's obviously water and sewer-impact fee eligible projects. Much easier for me to make some recommendation to you about how to spend that. But the ARPA funds, while they're limited, they're about $760,000, whatever I told you. I think there's a much wider opportunity to spend those funds. And I didn't wanna make any assumptions on how you wanted to do that. But obviously, if we have a problem in 2023 where we need, where you decide we need money when you're looking at this CIP and looking at the projects, well, that's one place you could go to pay, and just pick a water or sewer project that needs to be done, including the dam project, frankly.
I guess, I would, personally, would think everyone would use that more in the general fund.
Right.
Expenditures, not any utility funds. Because the ponds are part of utilities. And in the general fund, that benefits the citizens. And in my mind, those ARPA funds should always be more benefit the citizens, but that's...
And this is exactly why. Because, again, I don't know what your thoughts are about these things, but...
Could we utilize it for the drainage?
Well, we have a drainage fund as well.
I understand that, but add to it, because we have so much drainage...
Yeah, so you're gonna look at a list of projects, and we will, I can just guarantee right now, we will not have enough money to do all the projects that the drainage is gonna identify. So, the short answer is yes, you could use it for that too if you wanted to. Like I said, I think, in my mind, that those funds are very, very fungible. I just, anyway, it's a dollar.
We wanna be careful, right?
I think in some ways, anyway. You're gonna bucketize the money, I would strongly encourage you to, once you figure out how you're gonna spend your money, you say, we're taking this amount of money and put, of ARPA, and we're spending it on that. Because really and truly, the dollars become fungible at some point, and you wanna be able to put it in the most defensible bucket possible. But the short answer, Gina, is yes, you probably could use it for...
We call our stormwater that both ponds are about paid off from the rest.
In 2023, so, so keep in mind, that's why we're doing a drainage study now. You're gonna have a presentation.
Okay, three is one of these days.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if that's gonna be the 25th or the 8th. That's a separate group doing that, and they seem to be actually staying in their schedule, so that's good. But that's why we're, we did that, is so that you, by the time you're about ready to pay off those bonds, we would have an idea of what we wanted to do, so we could then issue additional bonds specifically for drainage projects. And that, the timing of that should be sometime early next year.
And I encourage everybody, go back and take a look at this and make sure, if you were thinking about applying any of the funds toward anything, make sure that it is on the CIP plan, because I think that we need to make sure that it is on the CIP plan. If it's on the CIP plan for a group that has a board or a commission, we should make sure that that's on their priority list as well. So, like, for, if it's something for parks, for any one of the parks, make sure that that is on the Parks Master Plan and identified as one of their main objectives. And I think the same with the rest of them. Utility, it's different. But just make sure that we've actually got it on there. Alright, anything else?
I'm thinking about that advice, because I understand where you're coming from, doing that. But at the same time, in my experience, sometimes city council wants to do something that's a council project that isn't on anybody's plan. That's just something that you say, you know what, we really feel, we think this is something that's neat, that's a quality of life benefit, that we wanna go ahead and do. And I think, like, the heating in the pool is like one of those. It wasn't necessarily a very high on other people's list, but the council suggests we're gonna do it.
Well, and that's kinda my point with that. I think that we need to be very careful. If we're gonna have these boards in place, we need to make sure that we're honoring those boards. And if you think that there's something that's important enough to be in an area where they represent, you need to make sure that you talk to them and make sure that they agree with this. And make sure, because to me, the boards and commissions are an extension of us. We can only reach so many people. The boards and commissions can each reach that many people. So, we need to make sure that we are using that as an extension of doing the will of the people. This shouldn't be a council decision. That should be a community decision that's imparted by council.
Well, I would suggest that if, depending on how strongly the council feels about that, that would be a great thing to put into a CIP policy. Because one of the things we don't necessarily have in financial policies, we have, you know, a list of financial policies that we've adopted, but we do not have kind of guidance policy for the CIP itself, because it's a brand-new docket. We just now created it, congratulations. We're just now doing it, great. But going forward, it would be beneficial both to you and your successors to have kind of a document that says, hey, this is how we make decisions related to the CIP. Because ideally, this is something that's not gonna be a one-and-done. This is something that will guide the city's spending through decades, ideally. So, yeah, I think...
I got a quick question. For the hotel motel revenue, is that something we could use on like our welcome signs? Because we did, we did the one event, no?
Yeah, I don't think so. Again, it has to be...
And that doesn't.
Let's say you wanted to do flyers for a July 4th event. That was a two-day event, because you had a parade on Saturday and then the fireworks on Sunday or whatever. That would be, that's marketing, and it would be eligible, because it's a two-day project. But permanent improvements that are tourism-related, but not, there is a certain percentage, like, that's allowed for administration or some other things. So, I'd have to seek, I'd have to get some legal advice whether or not you could use it for that.
So, like, Old Fashioned Christmas, that's coming up?
That's a one-day event.
There's two days. Yeah, it's Friday and Saturday.
Okay, you're right.
If it's a two-day event, there's a lot of money, there's a lot of different...
But as long as you have an event that spans the, basically, a reason for people to stay here two nights, then you can apply it to that.
What are you, Jaber, saying?
What's that?
The welcome sign, I believe we've asked that before, and I don't know that it could. I know we all set some money aside a few years back. I think it was $25,000 or $3,000.
Yes. Yeah, I remember that, because that was, that was my first year.
I'm not sure when it came into you, but...
Okay, I was just...
But the, the event, that's actually a chamber, isn't it? Don't they get the revenue off that?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we can still support things like that. And that's, it's really, I'll send you, actually, Joseph had sent me, it's the Texas Two-Step. It's very straightforward, and that gives you all the rules.
Yeah, if you just look, actually, if you do, if you look up Texas Two-Step Tax, if you put the word tax in, you won't end up at... Mind dancing stuff, but...
Texas Two-Step?
You should find it pretty quickly, because it's out there in a bunch of places.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Something that has been an issue since I can remember, and has, I've been seeing, feeling more pressure about lately, is Houston Square. And it's not on our list of projects.
It is.
Um, let's double-check.
I think we have...
Yeah.
Oh, Houston Square is there, okay.
I thought it was more than that, that we had in there.
It's a total of 348.
You changed it.
I did not, sir. I actually have done very little to the...
I missed it earlier, it was scrolling by, and I didn't see it.
The vast majority of what of my time is spent on utility funds. There are some, like I said, I know some of this stuff is wrong, because I haven't really looked at the general fund spending. So, a lot of this remains unchanged. I did update a couple of things. You will see for McVay's, Ms. McVay's benefits, not here, but... The animal control facility was in there before, and it's still in there. Now, she failed to mention that they've raised a considerable amount of money. They've got about $60,000 that they've raised towards the facility. Now, granted, when I started to talk to her about how she wanted to spend her money, it turns out, initially said, yeah, we're gonna help you build the building. And then when I said, well, that's great, because I think the city has some money, the county has some money. Well, then they met as a board, and they're like, you know what, we're not gonna use our money, that they raised to build a building, to build the building. We're gonna use it to fund, I don't know, what else? And I was like, no, 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 that's a capital, anyway. We have some things we need to talk about if we're gonna do that project. The county is supportive of doing this, by the way.
And the dollar amounts are not set with this either. And so, that number, 800,000, was actually in a different version that you have of this, because you have multiple versions. So, I think that that is something...
I had 800,000 where?
It was in, I'll have to take a look at it. It was $800,000 as a placeholder for CIP in 2027.
For Houston Square?
Yeah. Yeah, it was in one of your spreadsheets that was labeled... Yeah, it was in one of your spreadsheets that was labeled CIP funds. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter because these are all.
Yeah, they're all just guesses. And really, it's not real until it becomes real. And that's decided by you all on an annual basis when you decide, here's what we're actually going to fund. And so, yeah.
The library, the 45,000 that's earmarked, what do we have?
We actually did spend some of that already. In fact, I think we spent most of it for this year. So that was for the improvements to the drive through that came through. If you remember, we bought the kiosk, but that drive through was built in part to give greater shelter and access to the library so that they can get book drop off and drive through drop off and all that. That, some of that was spent.
Because I was thinking, we're growing. Our library needs to keep up and everything. I didn't know, since it has that green grass in the back and everything, on the one side of it, maybe looking at, considering expanding the building.
The building, the way it's oriented, really the only way that it can grow, it's not, but it really is, it's got a roof truss that's kind of like this. It's oriented east to west, more or less. So the, where it can grow would be on the western edge, which isn't a lot of room. But hey, you know, if you wanted to expand the building, in my mind, that's where you would expand it. You'd do it between there and the parking lot. And you'd gain, there's some, there's some great, you'd lose some nice landscaping. There might even be a little bit of a garden right there. But you would take all, my thought is you'd fill in that space between there and the curb and it's 15 to 20 feet maybe. It's not a lot. But that expansion of that building, who knows, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
But I think that's something that would, that would fall under, if you think about like in El Seche Oaks where we have the space set aside, that might be.
Oh, yeah, you could, to Deborah's point, you could make it a two story building if you want. Go up, but I'd again, two stories, you have to, is the foundation built for that? I don't know. Usually that stuff you do.
It's just something to consider because we are growing and.
Yeah, but you know, as we're growing, if we talk about new paying for new, then we wait until that revenue starts coming in and we do have a tourism place. So that's going to be a delay. So we're going to be underserving, I think we're, for the library, we'll be underserving for a little while. Unless we just like, unless our businesses do great and we continue to have the rise in revenues that we have with something like that, I think we start looking at it. But I think that it is, it's really a choice of how we do that.
Maybe slap it up on the CIP, that way it doesn't fall by, you know, out of sight, out of mind type thing. Just.
So let's maybe talk that over with the library board and see what their recommendation would be.
It is on there. There is a, this 345,000 is intended for an addition to that library.
Okay.
Not a new, you know, a new library would be millions of dollars.
Right.
That's why that's in 2026 as a placeholder. But again, these numbers are just guesses. They're not, I mean, they're just.
That way, you know, I can go back with the board and let them know, hey, they got this note for expansion because with the meeting we had.
And I don't think that you relegated to that, honestly. I think that you, you think outside of the box and say, these are what our options are. And we have the option to, what we don't want to do is go and improve something that we're just going to trash in five more years or that we're going to ignore it. I think that you look at, we know that the library is going to have to grow. So I don't think putting patchwork on this makes sense unless it increases the value of the use of the actual building. Actually, the kiosk, I think with the way that Scott did that improves the value of the building. So eventually, that's something that you sell off the library where it is right now and you build a new library, something, I mean, it's really thinking long term. The short term patchwork, I think you're just going to bite us in the backside.
Well, it's going to hit us soon. I just didn't want it to fall off, like I said.
And I guess the also, this is just guidance because any future city council can.
Yeah, change it.
But, and Herb has said this before and Gina said it just now, I think it is crucial that we get that on there. And if you want to bump that up and say that it's going to be more, it's not real until it's funded.
Right.
So if you think that we're going to have to spend more than that, all things considered, I mean, part of that revenue could be same thing that we're looking at like with public works. If we move public works, part of that revenue is going to come from public works.
Correct. Or the workstation too.
So again, this is a workshop. The concept was to just kind of bring this stuff to your attention. I don't know the best way, frankly, to get your input on this stuff. And Mayor, I'll lean, you know, pretty hard into what you think, how we should do this. You know, doing, doing budgeting by committee is not fun. But that's why I'm saying, I'm kind of doing a head of lifting on the utility side. I'll bring you a workable plan on the utility side, but I generally, and I'm not saying that means you don't get input, by all means, once I bring you kind of what I think is a working plan that can be funded, much like the budget, then tell me what you think of it. On the, on the general fund side, I'm doing less of that purposely because again, I think that a lot of this, it's not so much needs, frankly, other than streets. I've got streets. I've kind of suggested how we should go about funding streets, two and a half million dollars every two years ideally. And if we do that for the next 10 years, we should have a lot of our streets in really, really good shape. Provided that we don't have inflation that is double digit. And we're getting pretty damn close to that. So I've got, I'm putting that in and then I suggested $500,000 for parks every two years. So that's $3 million, if you ever think about that, or no, that's three and a half million dollars. You still have 1.5 out of the $5 million borrowing. So that gives you $750,000 in general fund projects that are not, are you following my math? That I haven't really plugged in. I plugged in streets, I plugged in some park stuff. But then there's this other stuff, planning and other stuff that you might be interested in funding. Now, keep in mind, we also have the northern route that we've committed to that we don't really have funded. That's 450. But you also have excess reserves. So you have the ARPA funds, $760,000. You have, what did I tell you on general fund? Three million plus in cash that's available for you to spend. I think that's it for the general fund.
In the utility discussion earlier, you have a new public works building. Does that mean that we're not moving the four temporary buildings to the new location? We're going to build a new location?
Well, first off, that's for you to decide. But if you're asking what my intention was in putting in there, yes.
You were going to move them?
No.
Okay, then I was just going to point out, there's your extension for the library. You've got four trailers sitting over there that can go behind the library. We can make the library twice as big as it is.
So those were put in there meant to be temporary. I think that with all of the things that we're asking of the new developers, if we're going to start throwing out mobile homes, I think that we're doing the wrong thing.
Well, that's what I was going to, I was going to explain why I did that. So the reason I shifted it, because originally, the money that was in there and it's still, I think it's still in there in one place, was just the cost of making, like standing up some metal buildings like for storing our equipment or need and then moving those and doing site prep. So there's like $85,000 worth of site prep for the new site. But in light of all the lectures we've done and everything we talked about in that 33 acres, I didn't think it was appropriate to leave that as a mobile home or as a mobile place. The other thing is, and I invite any of you to do this, if you go by and look at our public works facilities, those buildings, I don't know how long you have owned them, but they are showing their age.
When I talked to former Mayor Lee about the intent, I'm like, why'd you give us mobile homes out here? He said, they literally were supposed to be a stopgap measure. And I think that's, that part of this is honoring what that council had decided, that they were going to put a stopgap measure. It was never meant to be a long term thing, so I think we need to honor that as well. I just, I think there are so many reasons that we don't continue with that. I think that we owe it to ourselves to be better than that.
And I believe those buildings, if they were to be moved.
They fall apart.
Because they weren't meant to, that building over there had molded and had fallen down. That's one of the reasons why they're gone.
I'm going to ask Todd if he needs a new hunting lodge.
You'll have to rebuild it.
Well, so again, so it's an excellent question. I just, I threw some of these things in there in light of some discussions, but I really, this is an area for y'all to go and think about. At the same time, you may recall on August 23rd, you were provided some information and I'm not going to pull up the packet because I didn't do that earlier, but I can pull it up here.
Actually, while you're looking at that, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear on this. So I just made some very strong statements to all of you. So I want to make sure you know that I feel very passionately about this. I'm not saying like any, it's not disparaging anybody on the council for what their thoughts are on this. I just feel very passionately that we need to not. So if it came across any other way, please forgive that, that was not my intention.
Man, I was going to vote to move on that.
I ain't saying nothing now.
So I get a little passionate about things up times, so I apologize.
This, there was a list of things that were provided on August 23rd in your packet and I can bring these up individually. You know, pool heating was in there, P radios, those have all been funded. But there was this portable restrooms, the trailer mount portable restrooms that were provided. There were these additional parks projects that were included in your packet as kind of the same way that some of this other stuff has been mentioned tonight, just as ideas. And so I can resend that to you. It's sent in an email with like six or seven attachments. If you'd like me to, I'll resend that.
Or just send a link to this? Because that's on the sharepoint, that's on.
No, this was in my folder. The, it should be the, well, it should be in your packet. I'll have to double check.
From when you looked at it.
But this just had various things, like this is the parks list. I know it's very difficult to read. This is the parks list, Parks Board, capital planning that's unfunded, right? A bunch of stuff that they'd like to see accomplished, most of which is unfunded. But the concept was, again, you have $3 million in your general fund, fund balance that is excess from what you really need to have. And then you have 700 and somewhat thousand dollars of ARPA funds. So you've got some cash to do some quality of life improvements. And so the goal was to kind of get you thinking about some of these and see if there's anything in there that.
The pool building is earmarked for $400,000.
Where is that?
Your swimming pool?
That's everything about it. Oh, yeah, this is, well, so this isn't the CIP. If you were to look at the CIP for the pool building, that's under grants in general fund facilities. I think.
Parks.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's in parks. Yeah, there it is. So this regional multi purpose facility, that's going to, that's the thing that we're going with Tony Gonzalez. And so that'll take care of that building. So just be aware of that.
So the way that I would recommend that we do this, and I'll, I'm going to recommend this, but I do want council's opinion on this. I think that as we start planning for the next CIP planning session, I think that each one of us go through and categorize this, much like what he's got on here, categorize the spending and, you know, talk to the people that you represent, talk to the boards that your liaison's with or that might support something like this and figure out what some like high value targets would be. Put a dollar amount attached to it and just come with some ideas. Maybe send that out, send that to Scott ahead of time, just so that he can get a kind of a preview of what you're thinking about it. I think that you really need to put some brain power over it to, over the next week or two to figure out what that looks like. And then Scott, when we come back in, I think if you come to us and say, these are the things that I know that we're committed, these are the areas of risk. For example, the northern route, this is going to be, and this, if this is too heavy of a lift, please let me know. But if you say, the risk that we have is the northern route could cost, you know, whatever, ballpark that, $16 million. Our side of it would be $8 million. This is where it would come out of and so you might want to keep aside some reserves. So I'd really be able.
I'll do that. I don't know enough about the northern route financing yet to really tell you. Because I honestly, I mean, Clay and I have had some conversations. If you, it depends on what mood Larry Sitter's in and I'm not being disrespectful at all, but sometimes it's like, I think based on his comments, well, the county is going to fund all of it and they're going to issue this debt. And then I'll talk, you know, a month and a half later to someone else at the county and they're like, no, no, we're not doing that. I'm like, okay, well, so I don't know what to believe. So I don't know how that's being funded, but I'll get the best information.
And honestly, the county should fund that because it's not our traffic. We're just stuck with it. That's, that's something we'll work on. But I think that if you come to us and say, these are the areas that you need to look out for. These are the gotchas. These are maybe dollar amounts and make some recommendations. Basically, what the result of that would be, make recommendations on some holdback funds. So we should keep some for a rainy day for these specific reasons in these specific areas and of these, you know, the range of amounts to keep in there. Does that sound like a solid strategy? Does that work?
That's just, I think, in order to do justice to this, I think Scott ought to break it down and tell us, here's the ones that must be done. It's going to cost this much money. We've already agreed to it and set that aside.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And then say, now, let's look at the remainder, then let's prioritize them and then let's work down the list and do what we can do.
That's exactly it, except I added on to that, look at some holdback funds. So we know exactly what's committed and then we have contingencies.
You don't know what the economy is going to do.
Exactly. Okay.
Yeah, so I wanted to show you, this is where we're, those, in the, in the presentation, you'll see the clips that just shows some Excel spreadsheets on the general enterprise funds. That's what this is. You'll also have access to this that shows you, but it speaks to what's committed and what's already spent. So you understand, hey, of the bond funds, you know, the ones that we issued, here's what we've already committed, here's what we're spending. And like I said, on the streets part, I'm doing my best to spend what we allocate for streets. I really am frustrated. I would have liked to have spent, I would have liked to have already committed at least a million dollars. And we just haven't done it yet. All right. I think Mayor, that concludes the presentation I had on the various spending options. There is a, some additional stuff I'll send you for the general fund parks. In addition to what I sent before, I'm going to add a couple items to that that you can think about.
I think this presentation was amazing. Thank you. That was great detail, great information.
Scott, I do have one question, just, yeah, real quick. You mentioned first party presentation, you had the retaining funds for any day, if you will. I think the government.
120 days.
120 days, right? So do we know what our operational expenses are per day or month?
Yeah, yeah. That's in that presentation when you go back and look at that. What I did is I took your adopted operating budget for both general and utility, divided by 365 and that gives you your daily. So for the, for the utility fund, it's almost double. So the utility fund is like $20,000 a day is what we spend to operate the utility fund or utilities. And then on the general fund side, it's about $10,000 a day. And so anyway, I did that math for you. You can see what that would be to retain it. Again, that's another policy that, it's a financial policy you all set. I have worked for cities that only had 45 days in fund balance. I've worked for cities that had 90. I think, I think NS, I think in Flatonia, I was trying to get them to 90. They dropped back after I left, but I had them at 90. And in NS, I want to say we had 120.
And I would say.
Generally, more than 120 frankly is, I know a lot of cities have a year. I just think that's silly.
Well, we have over a year now, what, 411 days is what the report says.
Yeah, we definitely need to reduce.
Yeah, but that's not my policy. I know people have a policy for a year and that's just, geez, that's a lot.
No, I think that our policy should be 120 days because that is, that's very secure and our, like there's people, the entire town is not going to stop paying their utility bill for 120 days.
That gives you reaction time.
It gives you reaction time, but it also, we have really old infrastructure. So if emergency projects come up, it's good to have that extra because of the age of the system.
We all had it passed. A previous council passed that.
Passed what? Yeah. That's what I'm saying, it's in the financial policy now. It's a, but my point in saying that is that's your policy. So if you wanted to change that policy and make it 90 days, you could do that. but right now, 120 is what we have.
Perfect. All right, anything else?
I'll actually answer my second question right there, thank you. Whether that was a policy or a statute of law, or, yeah, so, okay.
It is a best practice and a policy. All right, so the next one is discussion and possible action on adopting a development agreement policy. So we provided a bunch of documentation, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you an overview, and then I'm gonna have Herb speak to the first part, and then we'll follow it up. So if you look, this document right here, the development agreement policy discussion, this is something that Herb had dug through this, and really looked at it in depth, and this is the kind of thing that I'd really like to see from all of you, as we're looking at these things, getting in, and there's some things that I'll address in a second, but he really looked at it like foundational things, and then recommendations on elements of the, of the policy. So I'll let Herb handle that, and then we'll talk about what we've already done in the past, and what's kind of in place right now, and then we'll talk together about how we look forward. So Herb, if you don't mind.
Okay, I'd like to talk to the chart that says background, page two. My purpose in bringing this to the council as an agenda item was to spur discussion, and I had more discussion with the mayor today about it than I've had in a long time, and it's become very clear to me that discussion is good, because it helps clarify what we've really done in misperceptions. I was of the perception, we really didn't have a policy, but the mayor clarified for me, and he's given some documents he's gonna talk about, we have, we have done a lot of work in this area, but what I wanted to do was to zero in on a few specifics, and then try to get city council members to add in their primary concerns. So we ended up with a list of things that we could, we could consider. We've talked a lot about Alsatian Oaks, we know it's, it's moving along pretty well, and it's a very good model, so we're gonna try to leverage that, but it's obvious that that model's not gonna work in every case. Clay Benford has made it very clear to us that every development is unique, every development has special needs, and so having even a unified development ordinance is gonna help us, but it's not gonna deal with every possible thing. So we need policy that gives us flexibility. The big, the big issue for a development agreement, it's gotta protect all the parties. You can't go into an agreement where somebody's taken all the risk, and somebody's taken no risk, but we have to minimize city risk, that's, that's key, and we've gotta look at every single thing in there. We've gotta be able to look citizens in the eyeball and tell them, you're not paying for this out of your pocket, it's being paid for by the developer or some other way, but you're not the person who's gonna be coming and paying bills. It has to be transparent, open, and we have to be realistic in what we estimate, and I just felt really good about this today, 'cause I know that when we did Alsatian Oaks, we did a 4-4-4-4 plan, four good years, four bad years, four good years, four bad years, which was great in hindsight, and now we're seeing some bad years. In the last month, mortgage rates have doubled, already up to 7%, that's gonna affect how fast they build out. So we have to, we have to do that, and we have to have information that the public will trust, and that's hard to get. If you go to the page three, I'd just like to kind of summarize some of the key things that I think we've learned. First of all, we gotta, we gotta, we already do, we empower the mayor and the city administrator to be our primary negotiators in the beginning, and we count on them to keep things confidential. They tell us what we need to know, when we need to know it, but we have to have confidential negotiators, and that's pretty well established. We have to pick the best option. Clay Benford is good, he's good for us, he's proven that he understands Texas law, and he's gonna give us the best possible options. Then we have to, like I said, take off the rose-colored glasses and be realistic, be pragmatic, let's not assume things are gonna be rosy when we know they're not. We have to, we've talked a lot in our workshops about heritage, cultural things that are important to us, we've gotta keep those in mind and always try to do our best to leverage them. But it's clear from what we've learned in the last couple, three projects, that American homeowners are changing their minds about what they wanna buy. It's not the same proposition that it was 20 years ago, so we have to be mindful, and we have to make our development agreements have the ability to be flexible and deal with that. The next thing I really wanted to point out was, we did a lot of effort to show people in Alsatian Oaks what the, what the projected real costs were, and that took a lot of work, and it spanned a 30-year period of time. And I get the feeling sometimes that we get pushed, we get pushed for deadlines, and I understand that the deadlines are real, but we have to be careful and make sure that our policy provides for an opportunity to explain to the citizens on a time-phase way that they understand what, what our revenues are gonna be, and how we're gonna, how we're gonna take care of city needs. I thought that was one of the strongest things that the Alsatian Oaks Development Agreement did, was it showed citizens how we were gonna grow revenues over time, and it showed how we were gonna take those revenues and purchase the additional services that we know we're gonna need, and I think we need to do that same thing whenever we possibly can. And I guess the last thing is, you know, we gotta make sure, once we vote to do something, that we own it, and we get it done, and we deliver what we promised. And I think if we, if we start building on these premises, we can come up with a lot of ideas that we can put into a document to supplement what the mayor's already got, and, and I think, I think we're doing a very good job as a body with a fast-moving train. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate all the time and effort you put into this. And I will, I'll want to address a couple of things on here, I actually, on, if you look back at the background, so, we do have a development agreement policy, and this is based on, we talked about guiding principles, if you guys remember how we had worked through that, and these are, many of these are actually addressed in those guiding principles, and that really is, is almost a policy document, wasn't formally adopted, but I think we need to adopt a formal policy on this. Herb is absolutely right, Alsatian Oaks is the most recent, it's the only development agreement that we have, and it provides an excellent example for future use. Actually, Clay points new developers to that agreement and says, this is a good agreement, yours is not gonna be this good, but use this as your basis. And the reason for that is because they brought money to the table, they put up their own money, and, and if we had put up money to build this infrastructure, and the housing market would have slowed down, the citizen, the city, and then the citizens through the city will be responsible for this, but the brilliance of the plan, to Herb's point, was that, that he put it together, that it put all of the risk on the developer, which I feel bad for the developer, but my first and foremost responsibility, all of ours, is to the citizens that we represent, and I would say that that council, I was not a part of it then, I can't take credit for that, but almost everybody here can, so great job on that. It does provide an excellent example for future use. I would say, though, so one of the things, and Herb and I talked about this, every development agreement will be different and unique, and he said, so our policy must be flexible and adaptable. I disagree with that, and I agree with that. I think that our policy should not be flexible and adaptable, it should be encompassing of the major elements, and then the minor elements that are site-specific, that's the thing where Clay, as our attorney, and Scott, as, as our city administrator, can work through those individual details that fit within the policy. So I think that our job is to write a policy that is broad enough to cover the major elements, specific enough to handle the key items, and then leave the flexibility on the tactical items to them. But all the rest of those, I would say, based on the actions that were done through the Alsatian Oaks Agreement, and through the things that we've been doing, I think that we're accomplishing all of those. I would say that with the factual charts, you know I love numbers, I, I think that the way that, the way that it was approached was very, very conservative, and I, and I talked through, through this a lot with Clay, he took what, basically what our fund expenditures were for each different department, for each different section, and he divided it by the number of taxpayers, and he multiplied it by the number of units that were going in. Really straightforward, but it doesn't, where I say it's conservative, it doesn't take into consideration the economies of scale. So we're not, as we double the size of the city, we're not doubling city staff, the biggest expense that we have is city staff. The other portion of this that is very difficult to do, the house tops only pay for, right now, it's 11% of our general fund revenue comes from house tops. And so you can't really, for a development, you can't necessarily pull that out, because the majority of the revenue is gonna come from the businesses, and the businesses always follow the rooftops, and so there's some delay in there. But the reason that it was so important to do that in the Alsatian Oaks Agreement is because that was a TERS, where basically it was being reimbursed through the taxes that were generated. I don't foresee us doing, and this is a council decision, but I don't foresee us doing any more TERS unless there's something extraordinary that people are doing, we can do a PID where the people that are moving in are paying for it, but not a TERS which is a tax deferment. So I think that if we do another TERS, then we absolutely need to start calling public meetings and explain this to people, and really have our backs on the road to, to be able to do it, just like you did with Alsatian Oaks, with a PID, I think that it is more important to talk to them about the policies of how we're, what we're requiring out of the developers to do their part to honor the long-term viability of the city, the long-term heritage of the city. So the first item that you see here, the guiding principles, these are all the things that, that we had talked about before, and I'll read them out loud so that people can hear them, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take a little bit of time, I know you wanted to get out of here at 7:30, but, sorry. So number one is lifestyle. We're responsible to ensure that Casterville is a great place to live, work, and play. Anything that does not meet those criteria should not be approved unless mandated by law or beyond our control. There was one thing, I think I may have missed here, I'll take a look at it, and I'll caveat that at the end. Fiscal responsibility. We are responsible first to the existing people who live and work in Casterville, and we should not burden them, and us, since we all live here too, with the expensive people who don't live here yet, or have, don't have businesses here yet. If we make investments to make that, if we have investments to make that will make life better, discussing it with the people it affects, and allowing everybody to hold a stake in their own futures. There was one caveat to this that Councilman King had brought up, and this isn't just to the citizens of Casterville, but it is to the community at large, because we do have a commitment to them.
Good memory.
Yep. Like a horse or a donkey or something. An elephant, that's what it was. Transparency. We must operate in open communication with the people that we represent, and make efforts to better communicate with people early and often, so that we have more time to react and provide input. This will take time, but it's imperative that we do this, and we do this through policy. Every public hearing that we are required to have, we add an extra one. We have done, we've gone above and beyond to make sure that the public is aware, we talk about it through social media, through papers, through individual reachouts, and I think that everybody's done a great job of this. Accountability. The elected decision-makers must be accountable for our decisions and to the people we represent without exception. All elected leadership on city council, including the mayor, and each council member are also citizens, so we have vested interest in keeping taxes and utility rates low, and to make sound decisions to benefit the greater good, not specialized interests. We have to be even more diligent to represent others who live here and who are affected by our decisions. To ensure that happens, we must use all means available to communicate and provide a means for everyone else who lives here to have control of their own destinies through us. We must listen to and actively pursue input from our existing citizens and businesses. Our long-term vision, our goal right now should be to develop a strong foundation, and my wording on that was terrible, I apologize for my grammar, but it's basically to develop a strong foundation, on, onto which we will build. The decisions that we make today can affect our populace for years to come. We cannot afford to make short-term investments and decisions without investigating long-term consequences. We also can't make long-term investments and decisions without investigating the near-term effects on citizens and businesses, and ensure that we have a say, they have a say in their own future. The next is proactive operations. As important as long-term vision is, we still have the immediate needs of the city to maintain, for maintaining the normal operations of the city. These duties and responsibilities, if ignored, can threaten the stability of our government and the lives of everyone in Casterville. We must diligently maintain a responsible, methodical approach to keeping our physical infrastructure, our compliance measures, and our other responsibilities healthy. And then finally, we are community stewards. Casterville has resources that are for the use and benefit of our surrounding community. Oh, this is where we.
As we did.
Okay, good, so we got it. This falls under our commitment to make Casterville a great place to live, work, and play. We will continue to be good community stewards, but will provide full visibility at all costs to the taxpayers, and give them a voice and a choice, I read, in what resources we support financially. So this is what we had discussed, I believe it was a year and a half, two years ago, and out of that, the final thing that you see is, basically I had provided that to Clay, and what he's provided, and this is two sides of you didn't see, is a, it is an introductory policy letter that is given to the new developers to say, this is what city council will support. So I think that we take this, this is a good beginning document, so if there's anything that we have missed by our guiding principles, and anything that is not included, and there are two things that I'll tell you right now are not included in this, I think that we need to add those in. So as we develop this, this policy, I think that we need to make sure that we, we look at, the purpose of the guiding principles is, I say it right here, they are the measures by which we should make all decisions. If an initiative, action, or request conflicts with the guiding principles, then it should be denied. It's the same thing with the development agreements. If it conflicts with any of these, or if it doesn't support the things that we said that we're gonna support, it needs to not go in there. So taking those guiding principles and applying it to a, a policy document for development agreements, I think is crucial. In here, the two things that are not are the, what do we call that, the escrow. So the escrow for, for our city attorney is a set dollar amount, and then the escrow, what we, what we had discussed before was the escrow for the, the city designers, to make sure that, so basically they put in a certain amount into escrow to have the city attorney engage and start doing the legal actions that are required to create the development agreement, basically that pays for the attorney services. The escrow that goes for the city planners will go into development of long-term, they're part of our long-term documents, but also doing charrettes to make sure, kind of like what the, the guys did last time, they did a charrette that took a look at what our, our policies are, what the developer was trying to do, and actually helps them through that portion, so that they come out the other side with something that meets with what our requirements are. So those are two things that are not on here, so.
Does that include architectural review?
Yes. So that escrow, so there's an escrow, a legal escrow, and there is a design escrow. It includes not just review, it is an interactive process where, so the, the engineer that's been working on these, you might know him, he lives here locally, he, when we went through this, he's like, wow, that's what happens when you use an architect, because he knows all of the principles, he knows how to make things so that they work, and the architects know how to make it so that it honors something visual, something functional.
Our vernacular.
Our vernacular. Well, and it's not just our vernacular design, it's our, like, of the buildings, it's the vernacular of the horizontal, it's the streets, it's the interaction, it's the, the.
Atmosphere.
The atmosphere, right. So, so those are two things that I know are missing from here. So what I would ask in form of, what I would, and I'm, I'm gonna pause after I say this, so that we can get some input, what I would ask for a decision from council right now is the support of using the guiding principles to develop a document that is given to our developers, and a policy that, that gives enough structure and flexibility to the, the city attorney to do things quickly and definitively, to, to be able to support this. So I'm gonna pause there, I said a lot of words, and let me start, we'll start with Herb.
I don't have any more to say, I, I think this is a good start.
You did a great job, thank you.
So when you're asking for, who are you asking to develop the agreement policy?
Us, we are the policymaking council.
Okay. I'm good with every, I don't have anything to add, with what you've said here, I just, I was trying to understand what plan, or what action we're trying to accomplish, so I mean, are we gonna, is council gonna take just recommendations, and add this to what you have here?
I think that the best, the best way to do this is take this and share it with, share it with the people that you represent, say, this is what we're looking at, these are the policies, start with this, and then out of this, so share this with them, I mean, this is, this is the main thing, and you can talk about some of the actions that we're doing to implement that, and see if they have any other ideas. So this is a moment for you to say, this is what our policy is, it's. It's the communication that's in here. We're telling you what we're thinking. We're asking for your input, and then we'll tell you what we've done when we're done. Make sense?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, Councilman King?
I love it when an attorney plays papers up in there. Has expressed in various guidance and regulatory documents burned at the time of the proposal. It's like...
Doesn't stand alone.
Yeah, it doesn't stand alone, but it doesn't, because we're giving this to a developer. If I was a developer, his first question back to me is, okay, I want to read the fine print. What are these various guidance and regulatory documents? In other words, is that a list?
That is a great question. If we had all of these documents in place, I would say that is less important. But because we are in the process of actually creating those, we have to keep that in there. Once we get them created, then we can be a lot more specific about it and say, these are the documents you need to look at. I think it's good to give them a very clear, defined roadmap.
Yeah, and I guess, yeah, and I guess from there, that's going to be just a lot of, well, what the hell does that mean? That's where you and Scott get to.
And that's part of the reason for the charrette as well. So the baseline, so what we've talked about is having, working with Bryce on creating those foundational elements of underground utilities. And these are the base things you've got to have. Design doesn't matter, these are the base things. And then the design team does the design stuff, and then the legal team does the legal stuff. And then out of this, we create documents that are a lot more clear so that you don't have to do all of this manual intervention.
So did Clay take this to build this?
Yes.
Okay, and did he take also Herb's stuff to build this?
No, this has been out there for over a year.
What, this?
Both of these.
Well, this thing, your email of...
I was sending it to, this is the stuff we talked about.
That's what I thought it was. I couldn't understand if this was the stuff, why didn't you just copy the earlier email?
Well, it was, so Herb has that because I sent it when I was mayor of protest. So it's in his outbox.
No, I remember reading all this stuff. Okay, but I didn't understand it. Now I understand. So this stuff, in this document here...
He created that from this.
A year ago.
Over a year ago.
Okay. So, and I guess, going back to the same thing, what are you, or what are you and Herb asking us to do now since these things are all out there? Or you think we...
These are not complete.
The final one?
Yeah, these are not complete. And this is one of the items, we talked before. I really want to get to the point where we have, every year, we have a new election, and we review, as soon as, like, in May, June, we review all of our policy documents. And Herb has been pushing really hard, I'm sorry to keep burning out, but he's been pushing really hard on creating policy documents. But those things, we have a lot of policy documents that we need to be reviewing and updating. A lot of them are really, really good, but if we don't review them, like Harold, we didn't do a review with Harold. There's a lot of policy documents that he doesn't know about. We find out new policy documents every day that we didn't know about. And so it's compiling them, documenting them, reviewing them every year. And so right now, we know that they need to be reviewed. They're really, really close, but they're definitely missing some stuff. So I'm asking you to relook at the guiding principles to see if they're full, complete, and accurate, and then look at this document from Clay and see what we're missing that actually helps us accomplish that.
So this is what you and Scott and Clay have been handing out to developers over the last year?
That would be Clay, I assume that he's been handing that out. And this was as they started approaching us, this is just kind of introductory. So he gives them this, he sends them to the Alsatian Oaks Development Agreement, and it's just that kind of foundation, here's the intro to what we're doing.
And as we've already talked about in the past, council, we have empowered you and the city administrator, the mayor and the city administrator, to start these initial discussions. And you don't need to bring it to us until you think it's, because I think we have feedback from us.
As long as we have the foundational policy documents that guide that, because the discussions that we have with them should follow council's will from the outset. And then if there's something else that comes up, that's where we discuss it in our development.
Basically, if they're coloring inside the lines, they don't need to talk to us.
Right, because you've already established those policies. And this, I think, is really good to share with the people that we represent, to say, these are what our policies are, and challenge us on these. And so this is what I've done, is I've said, these are what our policies are. If we're not doing this, tell me. And this is where we hold ourselves accountable to, and are we holding ourselves accountable to everything that we need to? I think this is really, really thorough. I think we covered a lot of this.
Clay, and I agree, this is very thorough. It would take a lot of time to pull this out and show where it's in this document, but you can kind of see where it's there.
No, I'm sure Clay didn't do this in an hour.
No.
So, okay.
Look for gotchas. So a gotcha is...
So you want us to look at this and then come back and tell you if there's gotchas?
Yeah, see if there's any gotchas. And then what we'll do is we'll review it.
And talk about it in future meetings.
Right, and then we'll do like an official codification.
Understood.
Understood.
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
So I don't think that we need...
That's how the side rolls.
To be clear, this was not adopted by, it was just in draft form?
Okay. Right.
Great.
It's not a policy, it's an email. That's why I had to go.
But Clay had actually done some work on it. That's why when I saw the two documents you sent me, I was like, oh, okay. This looks like a draft, this looks like it was adopted, but it wasn't adopted.
Okay, next item is executive session. So the city council will meet and wait...
I'm going to stop because I don't think we need to go into executive session.
Okay.
I do have an update that's a live update, Mayor.
Nice.
Hot off the presses.
All right.
John Anderson sent us his plan while we were in this meeting.
Wow. Nice.
All right.
He's alive. I had somewhat proof of life. We had some communication back and forth, albeit unsatisfactory, but he has let us know that he's working on it. I will tell you this, even though it's frustrating that it's taken as long as it has, this was a humongously tall order to ask for at the time that we had. So I'm glad we've got something. Now, what I don't have is a proposal from him on what this is going to cost us and how it relates to UEO and that kind of thing, so we'll get that later. The other items that we were, so that was kind of the update related to cobblestone. His plan is part of what will be in that agreement.
Does that mean we'll get the other pieces of the A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H that are missing? We'll see some more of those before we have to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, you should have...
We got most of it.
All of them except for his plan. I don't know what else was missing. I'll need to go, I'll double check that. What else was in the, I don't have the thing.
So we had, it was the Klig Auto Development Agreement.
No update there.
Cobblestone Village Development Agreement.
I gave you the update there.
If I can ask a question on that, I wasn't at the last executive meeting, so...
We can't talk about it.
So you can't tell me about it. My recollection in meetings prior to that, that we had to make it this, this date was picked because a decision had to be made this day.
Yeah, they postponed it, and we, anyway, yeah, they postponed it to December.
Okay.
Now, I am going to have some conversations with them about whether that is actually the date they want to try and do, because their anticipation was that they're going to get PIT approved on the 13th. And we don't want to do that. So I need to find out if they're willing to close sooner. Because if they can close sooner, then we could have, we only have two meetings. We have October and November 8th. So we potentially could do the development agreement on the 8th of November, because really, we have all the pieces we need right now. We didn't yesterday, but we do now. So if they're able to move that along, then potentially, we could actually do the PIT on the 13th as they requested. But they would have to be willing to close between the 8th and the 13th with enough time to show us that they actually bought the property and that he owns it.
That was a one-November deadline, right? Five o'clock on one November, he had to be able to prove that he bought the property.
I don't think it was one November.
Can we talk about these items?
Yeah, I was going to say, I want to be careful how much specificity we give right now in open session, but B isn't A, I'm going to work on some other details related to cobblestone, and I'll have a better update for you at the...
That answers my question. I just didn't know about anything other than that day was the deadline. But if that's pushed back, that's fine.
Yeah, I have put this on executive session for the 25th and the 8th. I'm going to put it on every meeting until it's actually done.
Could the PIT be approved contingent upon him developing and showing the deed?
I don't want to get into that in an open session. If y'all want to close, we're noticed for it, and we can go into executive session. I just have to call Cynthia, she's available. I mean, I don't want to pressure you not to do this.
We have an executive session on it next week, so that would be fine.
Next Tuesday, on Tuesday.
So the other item that we have on here is city convenience, property to the EDC.
I can update, there's really, we can update you all on Tuesday at where that stands. It's not really, there's no development.
Pretty easy, okay. Wow, we could have almost done it if I wouldn't have talked so much.
Yeah, you're losing a dollar. Split six ways.
So we will then skip executive session, and we don't need to reconvene in open session, and we have no possible actions. We're through the agenda, and we are adjourned at 7:43. We didn't hold up.
You walked in at the right time.